Maybe you went to make water, too. I don't know.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for your patience with our recess. We'll come out of recess now and convene the town council meeting. We'll begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the breathing of justice for all. Our first item of business is announcements. The Little Compton Historical Society will be hosting a launch of a dugout canoe on September 28th, weather permitting, from Secana Point and ideally from Lloyd's Beach, because Flunt Rock, also known as Horse Rock, Mochip's Rock, is located there and is sacred Wampanoag site connected to ocean travel. A Wampanoag artist, Donovan James Perry, will be baking the dugout canoe on the historical society's property in September. Are there any other announcements?
I have one. I was in Wilbers Woods Day and Tom Hawkins was down there for the probably four or five of his workers. And he tearing the bridge, he had the big teams in, 14 by 14. I guess there were four by, four by six white oak planks that they were bridge, so I think he's probably almost done with it. And it looks like it's gonna come out quite nice. And then he's supplying his time and his labor, so I mean, he's putting a lot of effort into it. So at the next meeting, I'd like to either give him a letter of gratitude or thank you from the town or some kind of plaque thanking him, so he knows he's been appreciated and his workers know he's been appreciated. If that would be possible.
This is the bridge of which he was the original builder and now he's brought it up to.
And this one's rugged, okay? So I think it'd be nice if the town council would give him a letter of gratitude or, like I said, a plaque or something. You and I can discuss that, Bob.
Good. Any other announcements that need to be made? Thank you for that. Yep. All right. Next is the approval of minutes of August 8.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Discussion on that. All in favor? Aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you. The next is old business, a copy of chapter 18 dash 70. Remember, that's the ordinance that we adopted, 72524, supplied for ratification of wording. Further discussion of the solicitors needed. The solicitor has informed me that he would like some additional time for that review.
Yes, and my apologies, this will be the last time I, we kind of went down a little bit of a rabbit hole on this ordinance that was not contemplated by either the planning board or the Commons Foundation. Exactly what was discussed at the meeting in July. I do want to give it a once over, and if you don't mind, we'd like it continued one last time to the next meeting.
For the public's consumption, this is the ordinance which we adopted contingent upon completion of the solicitor's review, and it specifically addresses attainable housing. It's an amendment to the zoning ordinance of the town.
Tony, could you send a copy of that, Carol, to disperse between the council before that, whenever you get it done for the next meeting, so we can just look at just the ordinance part of it?
Absolutely. It'll go out midweek, next week at the latest.
Thank you.
Motion to put this on to the next meeting.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you. Next is a report from the administrator on the status of remediation of deficiencies at 32 Commons. That's the Oddfellows Hall, old fire, old police station, et cetera, regarding the fire inspection that was conducted in July. And let me ask the solicitor to comment first, if you wouldn't mind, sir, regarding the, your caution that we ought to appeal for, or we ought to submit an appeal for an extension based upon the.
Yeah, I just have an appeal that the appeal will act as an extension. I just think to protect the town's rights, it's something you want to do, and the deadline, Carol, is what, tomorrow?
I think it's tomorrow.
Yeah, I think so, too.
So if you do that, that.
That in our motion.
Correct. That functions as an extension.
Yes, sir. Did you have?
Further than that, obviously, that is the most important point. Aside from that, we will need to engage some of the craftsmen in town. And I've reached out to a couple of them. They more than willing to come in, but we still need some time to do the corrective action.
Right. So I did talk to the town administrator briefly about an RFP, and he assured me that what we need is crescent alarms to go in there and some of the plumbers in town or a few other artisans in town go in there and start to work on that. We got to get the stairs done. So I'm gonna keep on you about that, Tony, so we can get whatever needs to be corrected in there corrected as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for the edification, everybody, that's the Oddfellows Hall.
The Grange, right. Same difference. Well.
Right.
So I'm going to make a motion that we allow the town administrator to keep on the remediation of the deficiency of 32 Commons regarding the fire inspection.
And would you add that there's an appeal submitted for?
And to file an appeal to get an extension.
Seconded as amended.
Motion is made and seconded to check the administration accordingly and attention. Is there any further discussion?
Just quickly, are you going to keep a tally on how much this is going to cost?
Yes.
And you'll have that for, is that every meeting?
Well, I will do that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And what funds are we going to use?
That's a good question. At this point, I have not, you know, because we, I don't know what we're looking at specifically. That's why we engage in, there is a, someone who has stepped forward, an architect, a local architect, not Melissa, okay, someone else who has shown interest in assisting us with this project. Currently, that architect is involving renovating two school buildings elsewhere. Actually happens to be in Bristol, repurposing schools, and I think she would be the ideal person to take a look at this.
Yeah, that just might, yeah. Okay, I'd just be more comfortable to, you know, see a document with a breakdown and a number, you know, so we can go forward on that. And I, you know, I know it's our responsibility as a town to take care of our historic buildings. That's what we need to do. And I know that the fire department's gone down there and has put us on notice now. Are we doing this because of that, or are we doing this because we want to put a senior center for our seniors in there?
There was work that needed to be done there. In fact, you know, back to the financing, there is money allocated actually on a capital. This is a capital project, so that's where we will be tapping, the funds will be tapped to.
So are we looking to put seniors in there?
So that was how this all started. I went down there with Angela Denham and Bob Mushin, and we looked at it. Elevator did work. It needs, all it needs to do to get it working is there is a key that has to be, key box or whatever it is, has to be utilized for when you use, use the elevator. It wasn't working the type, but I did go up and down in the elevator, so the elevator does work. Then it was requested, not by me, that the fire marshal go down there and take a look at everything, which in hindsight was probably a good idea, because if it's not safe for the, for the senior population in there, then the town, something happens to somebody, then the town's going to be liable. So that's how this all started. I was hoping I could get the seniors in there right away. Looking back on it, it's probably the best thing to do to have correct these, excuse me, to have these deficiencies corrected, so it's a safe place for the seniors to congregate without the town worrying about anything, the seniors worrying about anything. So the once situation that I'm going to stay on top of, like you just heard, that I'm going to be on top of the town administrator to make sure that these deficiencies are carried out in a prompt manner, so that we can at least try to get our seniors to have a gathering place. And Angela, you know, I've been working on this very diligently. I haven't given up on it. So and then the rest of you seniors there, so that's how this all started.
So I just want to make sure that the seniors, that's somewhere they want to go, so we're not spending money over and above what we have to do to keep that building correct.
Well, if there's deficiencies, no matter whether the seniors use it or not, the the Grange people still use it once a month on a Wednesday night, the third Wednesday of the month. And we want it to be safe for those people. We don't want it to say, okay, just do as little as you can to, just to get by. No, if other people are going to use it, and I think it'd be another gathering place that we could use for other people in town. Excuse me. I got my little dogs out there. They must be at the window tapping on it. So, excuse me, I'm sorry for that. So that's where we're at.
So when you, when you say it could be used for other people, I know that the sticking point for the seniors is their own place. They don't want to share it. That's what I've been hearing from, from Angela. I don't know if I've heard everybody else. So is, you know, is that somewhere you want to be if?
If that were fixed up and straightened out, then it would lead to stuff.
So what I said was, if it's, if it's not suitable for the seniors, then we could, might be able to use it for another gathering place. Because I'm also asking, Sal Marinowski was kind enough to come up with a drawing. Oh, boy, I'm going to have to go out and bring another dog to you.
Oh, I beg you, make another decision.
Everybody would love it, okay? It would take the onus off us. So I asked the town administrator if we'd get an RFP going on with the old fire station, because if I remember correctly, last January of, probably March it was, when we were deciding whether we were going to tear it down or leave it. Historical Society wanted to leave it, and there was other concerns about tearing it down. I know the building's not in that great a shape, but I think it still can be rehabbed, and that would be another avenue for other people to use. I would really like to see the seniors in there if we can accommodate them and make it nice enough for them, because it's one floor. They won't have to fool around with an elevator, but we'll see. But both buildings can be utilized for some functions in this town, because once they go, they're gone, okay? We've been waiting for two, two years to get a maintenance building over at the transfer station. So what I'm afraid of and what I'm trying to avoid is let's get something going here. Let's get something going. Let's keep moving along here, because everything seems to get bogged down. So it's nobody's fault. It's just, just the way, the way it is. So I think I.
Is there a motion on the table? No.
Oh, yes, there is.
Yeah.
To allow the town administrator to keep remediation efforts for 32 Commons and to submit an appeal in a timely fashion to the fire board.
That is the motion. Are you ready to vote on the motion? All in favor of the motion?
Can we add the, the cost that I was accruing to?
Addition to that, but he agreed to give it to you anyways. Do you want to add it to it?
Yeah, I'd like to add it to it.
Do you guys agree?
Could you say the language of what you're looking for?
We just want secured costs as it's going along.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll amend my motion.
And I'll amend my.
The motion then is amended to include the administrator identifying and following the cost of the project.
Isn't there oppo funds still left for that, Tony?
We have capital actually right now.
Okay.
Capital funds were allocated for that.
Okay.
And accumulator over time, so we have.
Okay.
Any further discussion on the motion as amended? All in favor of the amended motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Our next item of business is a letter from Angela Denham, who's present with us, requesting a senior representative be hired to assist the seniors and their desire for organizing programs and meeting their needs. If you would like to speak with us, we'd be grateful to hear from you.
First of all, I need to start by saying, if I offended anybody in that letter that I sent, I apologize. Anybody in this room that may have felt slighted by what I wrote, I do apologize. I really appreciate things that are going on in this town heading in a senior direction. And thank you to the list of volunteers who assist us, our seniors. Sal for acquiring the bus, senior bus drivers, Kevin's in our room right now, Barbara Rocha, Mike Rocha, community center kitchen workers, delivery people who deliver meals three times a week, Officer Caitlin and Sue Sisson. All done a great job, really reaching out to the seniors in this town and trying to keep things even more moving in that direction for us, which I truly appreciate. Yes, we do need a senior center in this town. It's also a point that really needs to be taken. I appreciate Gary and Bob calling me to come over to the Oddfellows Hall to take a look around and see if that would be acceptable for the time being, because a feasibility study is going to take quite a little bit of time. And, and I thought it would be good, and now it's a little bit on hold for now, which I understand after an inspection. What I am asking right now is that a senior representative, like Andrea, Andrea Lemos came from the Council on Aging in Westport to tell us, she is an outreach coordinator in her town. And she actually goes, people come to her for assistance or anything they might need senior wise, or she goes to their homes and checks in on them. She knows her clientele. She knows what they need. I'm looking also, maybe that could be an advocate hired by this town who have an office in the town hall here with a dedicated phone and number to be reached by our seniors or have them come in and talk to her or him, whatever the person may be. Someone to start organizing programs for our seniors to get educated on what's available to assist them in their time of need with resources, events, paying them visits, and maybe compiling a list of volunteers. This has happened in another town, compiling a list of volunteers in the town that she could match people to, that you can go over there and help that this person's really good. We've got a lot of people in this town that really care about one another and volunteer in this town. I think that it's commendable, so that she would have that list of people who could help anybody who needs assistance. So all I'm saying is please consider this request. It is so very important. Having our hopes rise and fall all these years of asking our council, and, you know, we, we just keep on coming back and bouncing back, but, you know, it's getting harder and harder when, and we keep reaching a wall that we can't get through. So years of listening to seniors say to me, thank you for having us gathered together. And things I've heard like, I probably never would have seen some of my old friends again if you didn't. So that's like very heartfelt. It warmed my heart and kept me going all this time. I hope you continue to keep addressing senior concerns, because your future depends on it. If you think having a senior center or advocate is expensive, ask yourself, what's the cost of doing nothing? Thank you.
Just one question. As you, I think, are aware, there was a person that we had our eye on who was a retired, person retiring from this town that I had hoped would be such a candidate, and she elected to not do that. But I'm wondering if there is, if you know of people today who are in, or, or if the public knows of people, or if there is someone in the public who says that's the sort of job I'd like to do, that would be helpful to us to have a, have a.
Okay, I could ask around. I could even ask Andrea. She might know some people in the area.
Yep. Just to get a start on how, who it is that's in that cohort of people that are interested in a job, if you will, that is the senior coordinator for the town.
Okay.
Before we simply go out and say, who would like to be one and have people ask us what would be the duties? It'd be helpful, I think, to us to have a sense of, there's a few people that have already told us what they would do in that role.
Would the, would the council agree on a full time or a part time? How would I address that?
But what, what do you think you need? Would it two hours a day if they're in here from?
Well, at least half a day.
Four hours?
Every, yeah, every day. And have, have that central occasion with.
Twenty hours.
Yeah.
A 20 hour a week job.
Something like that, yeah.
Why don't you see if you could come up with somebody?
Okay.
Who would be interested in the job. You've got my credentials. You can get ahold of me, and maybe you and Bob and I can meet with that person, and then we'll bring it to the council. How's that?
Yeah. So, so Angela, I just apologize to the committee for taking so long for you seniors to have this happen with the feasibility study. The feasibility study, I'm on the committee as of two months ago, and it's a really good study. It's going to be in people's mailboxes very soon. I think we're going to get the data that we need. So, you know, there's a couple of things in your letter that jumped out at me, you know, one of the words was dignity. I think it's important that we have, you guys have dignity.
Yeah.
Dignity you had in your letter for the seniors. I think that's very important. And I know going through your letter, you guys want your own place, so I'm empathetic with that. You want your own place. You don't want to share it. That's pretty clear to me for the past two years. The other other thing was the, the bus. You said it was a rundown bus. Is there something wrong with the bus?
No, like I said, I'm apologizing ahead of time.
Okay, because I know there's been a lot of.
Yeah, Sal, very much.
A lot of people that put effort into that.
Everything you've done, both of you.
Yeah, and there's been town money put in that.
I take the bus. I.
This is good.
No, it was a frustrating moment of writing stuff down, and I apologize.
So the bus is good. I was worried about the.
Sorry about that.
Got a new bus coming.
It was flat tires.
Be here pretty soon. Yes.
When will that be? Does anybody know?
They, they moving along. I know they are, and the wording, we have to provide the wording for the bus. So, you know, it, it's going to happen. It's too ripped up, so we work on their schedule. It's, yes.
So hopefully within a couple.
Information to the next meeting.
Maybe within a couple of months, so we'll have it for winter.
Before that.
Before that, but within two months, so we'll have it for winter.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for your share with the. Are there any votes that need to be taken? There are none. The next is a request that.
Well, I, I think there needs to be a vote taken on that, that Angela Denham's going to research a part-time senior person for town hall to work part-time. And Bob and Angela and I will get together and come back to the council with a recommendation.
I'll second that.
The motion is made and seconded that two counselors named and Angela combined to bring back to the council a recommendation on how to proceed with the hiring of a part-time senior advisor.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Correct the solicitor. What, what constitutes part-time versus full-time in the state?
Under 20.
Under 20, not 20?
I can't hear you, sir. If you would speak up.
The question is what constitutes part-time? I always say under 20, but I'm sure you can get up to the 20 hours.
Because that's what we consider part-time, 20 hours. We could always knock it back to 19, but then.
Is this something?
Very efficient on that stuff.
I don't think we need to belabor this. I think it's probably straightforward to say we're going to hire a part-time or.
Do you need to go out and advertise for that post that position?
Angela's going to try to.
Well, yes, I mean, I think we would do that, but we're, we're wondering, is there a, is there a cohort of people who will respond? Or will we, or will we announce it and no one will come? That's all.
Motion made and seconded, sir.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you. The next item is an item of new business, and it's to grant permission for the annual community dinner on the Commons to be held September 8th. I have to set up your table after 3:00 and the dinner bell rings at 4:00.
Approved.
Second.
The motion is made and seconded to approve permission for the annual community dinner. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing all four ayes, all of, that motion carries. The next is to receive letters of interest to fill the vacancy on the pension committee of a member of, a member-at-large, the unexpired term to June 30th, 2025. I have been in contact, I'll defer first to the Madam Burke, the, I believe, have no, no applications. I have had one person ask me about the schedule of the meetings of the pension committee and if they could be changed. I have pulled the pension committee and did not have a complete answer yet. I see no reason to, to not change the possible monthly date of a pension committee meeting. It's certainly not embedded in the charter or anything like that. It's, I believe the answer from the committee will be, yes, we can meet on another date. If so, I may have a candidate to propose, but at this point, we have no candidate to have applied. This is the position from which Robert Mara retired just recently, and so that is the vacancy. It's a, it's a citizen vacancy on the pension committee.
I'll make a motion if the council president comes back to us with that name. Next. Consideration for replacing that.
Second.
The motion is made and seconded that I return with a name to replace Rob Mara. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The next item of business is a review and consider approval of a report from the town administrator and the council president's proposed end of fiscal year financial allocations. This is a, an allocation that we put together at the end of a fiscal year in which we do several things. We look at each approved account, that is, the accounts that were approved by the financial town meeting, and within those accounts, for example, in the board of canvassers, are there overages that need to be compensated by the contingency account? I have identified a set of those that are over the, their, their spending limit, which is the purpose of the contingency account in the first place. And those number, those accounts total about $75.7,000. We have almost $84,000 in the contingency. So that's a series of accounts with the reasons therefore listed. The second, the second type of category is intra-departmental revisions to the beginning of your budgets. For example, dispatch, because of turnover, spent more money than it had in its budget. Police spent less money in its budget because it had lower cost employees. Therefore, a transfer is proposed there as an example. The next category is we transfer from two accounts, the revale and the capital accounts, the remaining funds that haven't been spent, so that they can be spent in future years on revaluation of property and capital expenditures. That's a common process. And the final category is encumbrances. That is to look at each of the accounts that the town has and say, within fiscal year 24, were we intending to do certain things that we didn't get to? A common is, a common example is highway. If we didn't spend any highway funds out of fiscal 24, and that happens to us when we get money from other people, such as the COVID money, such that we don't spend money on what we expected to do, we, we propose to carry those over into the next year, so that we are spending last year's and this year's money, in this case, to do John Geyer Road, to do Taylor's Lane, and to do Town Way in the. In this case, to do John Geyer Road, to do Taylor's Lane and to do Town Way in the upcoming year. Well, it's not upcoming anymore. It's here, but in this fiscal year, our intention would be to do those. We budgeted for them as if they were in the last year because that's when we thought we'd get to them. We did not. Those are examples. Highway is certainly the most, most significant encumbrance that we typically make.
Into, into view of financial actions for FY twenty-four.
The motion is made and seconded to approve the financial actions at end of year, twenty-four to twenty-five. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The next item of business is a report from the Pickleball Tennis Court Fundraising Group on efforts to date. It's one group to efforts.
Hi. I just wanted to keep you up to date. This is a fundraiser that's supporting the project of rebuilding the tennis courts in town. Our goal is to raise two hundred thousand dollars. Thanks to a very generous gift from one particular donor family, we have raised a hundred thousand dollars. We also feel that we've gotten easy money. We sent out letters asking people to donate through personal letters and from a townwide mailer. Hopefully everyone in the room will help us reach that goal. But we feel that the people most likely to donate have probably made their donations. So the hard part is now. And we recognize that and we welcome any suggestions you have as the town is our partner and we're supporting you to help us raise those funds.
When we raised funds for the recreation field years ago, one of our major contributors were significant entities within the town, specifically Bay Coast Bank and Sakonat Vineyard was among them that, that contributed to the recreation field. This money that, that is being raised by the, the fundraising group, it's targeted to accelerate the completion of the project or?
To supplement. We felt that, you know, we didn't want to do just taxpayer money. We wanted to contribute.
Less to, to make the overall cost of the project to the taxpayer smaller by, by a fundraiser.
Correct, correct. And I have submitted a grant to Bay Coast.
Okay.
And I think it'll be several weeks before we hear. And I actually asked them that we don't need the money now. We'll need it a year from now. Hopefully that'll be attractive to them.
Sometimes that is helpful with.
And I don't know who to talk to about this, but one concern we have is getting the names and donation amounts that are being given. As fundraisers, that's important information. And we'd like to get that information.
And the reason you don't have it is that they let the donations come to the town?
Yes.
In our process by the town? Okay, so you need, you would like the names and donation amounts?
Yes, people have.
I asked the solicitor about that. I don't know if he remembers. It's under the, the Access to Public Records Act. It's not something that has to be disclosed if a request is made. However, in this instance, if it's a, if it's this group that I guess you want to send out like thank you letters or something.
Right.
That's okay.
To release that.
Yes.
And it's, and it's anonymous. I mean, essentially it's just two of us that will know the amounts.
Only to Lavinia.
Okay. That'd be very helpful. Thank you.
I have another question.
Yes.
I, I'd like to know, is there a specific plan that you're raising the funds for?
Yes.
A specific amount that's been voted that is.
Yes, the process has been as follows. We were given some money by the town. We used that to hire an engineering firm. Our first was concern was location of the existing courts because they failed so quickly. We were concerned that the, it's wetlands. The firm was able to report that actually that's not the case, that the previous ports were not built in a manner that was suitable. So anyway, so we've, we've came with engineering firm that has looked at various plans for replacement and.
So the engineering firms have come up with the.
Correct.
The dollar amount that you require to get this accomplished.
Correct, correct. And, and that, that report was given to the recreation committee and they reported to the town council.
I would, I would, I would suggest that that information go out to four or five contractors because the amount could vary substantially.
Hoping that's the case.
It could be much lower. Engineering firms has to be.
That'll be the RFP process also.
So I would suggest that that gets done quickly so that you're not raising funds perhaps you don't need.
Well, Lavinia is right. The, the location has been settled. It's fine for a court. The water table was, I think, twelve. I think the water table was.
Seven.
Seven, okay. What was wrong with the court specifically, answer your question, was the base, when they, they subcontracted the base, it's supposed to be twelve inches on the whole thing. So it's eight here, it's nine here, it's eleven here, it's ten here. So the base was an issue. We put in a French drain that was beautiful and worked great and the town neglected to keep that up. So the water got under there. That's what happens in municipalities. I mean, you know, it's not, you know, and thirdly, the asphalt, you know, fifteen so years ago, because of the environment, the asphalt is not as good anymore. They've taken out some of the toxic things. So asphalt does not last anymore. They would only give us a year warranty on the asphalt. We're going to do asphalt again. So those three things coupled together is why the tennis court is cracked in seven, eight years.
But in, in direct response to your question, we cannot do an RFP and put it out to bid until we've raised a certain amount of money. And we're hoping that by December, we will be able to.
You could ask for a design bill from a contractor. There's, there's, there's a lot of ways you can.
Okay, all right, all right. We'll work with the appropriate people to make sure that happens. Thank you.
Any, any further questions on the committee? Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is a letter from the Harbor Commission offering town lot and street parking recommendations for Sakonat Point. The chair of the Harbor Commission is with us and I'll ask if he speaks to you.
This, you know, variety of issues that presented, I think, has everyone seen the letter? But probably not, you know, in the interest of brevity of the. I'm very things are safety right now. There is, times have changed, right? So since the pandemic, the amount of pressure on Sakonat Harbor from day visitors is just phenomenal. And the roads are completely full with cars on every sunny weekend. All of the no parking signs are disregarded and people are parking in areas where the emergency vehicles need to be able to come and muster. So we used to have a no parking circle at the end of Bluffhead. We haven't maintained that. And so it's not clear that that is no parking. It's clear that there's no parking along the fence. People ignore those signs that are part of that circle. People park in the fisherman's lot to the point now that fishermen coming to the harbor to go to work can't and they have to ask neighbors they can park. But it's overrun. People are now parking on the beach. Saturday evening, I saw someone pitching a tent on the beach. I saw a car come down through the area to the east of the, the clear area to the east of the boat ramp, come through, drive on the beach, back into the brush, you know, three feet away from high tide line. So it's, it's completely overrun. But some of the changes that we're recommending, like guardrails, putting back some of the constraints on parking, it's just basic maintenance. You know, it's, it's sort of like an adverse possession thing where we've allowed all of this encroachment because we just simply haven't maintained things that council, you know, knowingly put in place years ago. But things deteriorate. I don't know, pressure on that site now is just phenomenal. There's just so many people. The one fundamental change that we're recommending and you worked this up through your brains is to change the parking lot to purely permit-only parking. He presently cannot police the lot as it's being used now. And his belief is if you put one visitor sign in there and that space is full, then that visitor will feel entitled to park absolutely anywhere in that lot. So he believes the only way to, to police it and to assure the fishermen and the users of the town dock have access is to make it permit-only. I'm working with clerk's office. We've, I think, got a very easy way for, between the Harbor Commission and the Harbor Master, to be able to give a roster to the clerk's office of people who are qualified to receive a parking hang tag. And then we will maintain that roster like we do the mooring list. So the administrative will be on us because we have plenty of bandwidth to do that. It won't be on the clerk's office. There's just handing out tags to people that are on the list and recording the number that they've got. And between the police department and, and us, we'll maintain that. So it's.
So the lot would be oversubscribed deliberately and it's first come, first served, but it was, but they're only parking for, for pass holders.
Right, right. Commercial, commercial, commercial fishing, day fishermen and trip fishermen and, and users of the, of the dock and hoist. So that, you know, the chief's interpretation and our interpretation is that because the dock was built with public money with federal funds, we don't want to do anything to inhibit access to that dock. And in probably the northwest corner of the lot would be a staging area, transient, short-term parking only for people that need to configure a trailer or whatever to come, come and go. Or for the, the mooring companies that use it, subject to the weight limits of the hoist. It's a relatively small change, but you know, it would be a, it would be a code change that would have to go through that change process of advertisement and all. But we believe that, you know, for safety, for the ability of the fire department and other first responders to actually get there and know that they can predetermine what they always have. And then for the commercial fishing community to actually be able to go to work and also to preserve, you know, access to the dock for anyone who's entitled to use it. We're recommending these changes. Similarly, along the beach, it's just restoring things that, you know, the council had in place years ago. People are taking down no parking signs and people are just encroaching more and more on the brush and on the beach. So stopping that now before the bad habits, you know, continue to get worse is what we're asking.
Thanks. Solicitor made advice or the recommendation of the council that we refer the matter to the police chief for his review and actions. And it seems like that's a.
Has happened.
Appropriate first step.
That has happened, right? So I.
I met, I met with him personally and Ben met with him personally. I think Mike Maslow went up to meet with him, the harbor master.
So how would you like to frame any motion made with respect to this?
I have one question and Gary, you probably can answer this. Is this, is Sakonat Point state or town road?
Sakonat Point going into.
State road. It's state road. Okay, so we have to be cautious about signs we do there because we got to get permission from the traffic commission to deal with the parking signs there?
Well, there's parking signs there right now, but the problem is people park underneath parking signs and.
Yeah. We have, we have coordinated with the state's requirement as we modify, but you're right. When it's a state road, we need to interface with them. I think that interfacing has been done.
Right.
Backing down immediately.
Really putting back in the one parking sign that's most important is right before the, the corner just south of the yacht club. There's a, the pole is still there, but someone took down the no parking sign. So they can jump the curve and park their trailers on the grass that rode there. Again, it's just, it's, it's a question of us diligent about maintaining the thing.
Well, I'll make a motion that the council allow chairman of the Harbor Commission, chief of police, myself, Carol Wardell, take up these recommendations of the Harbor Commission, proceed with them.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there further discussion?
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
Question, clarification? Does this mean that the parking area by the town dock will be exclusive to commercial fishermen and not open to the public?
That is the recommendation as I also heard it.
Yep, permit parking.
This is town lot as a permit, permit only parking.
For the commercial fishermen.
Yeah. And their deck ends.
With the potential modification of the the yacht service people who come to work the town hoist or, you know, there, there is, I, I heard it, like you were saying, something to the effect that there are exceptions to.
Well, I mean, the, the yacht club launches the Aldens and Yinglings there, Halsem. So that happens a couple of times a year. The mooring companies come in and use the hoist, you know, subject. There's not many blocks that can be, be moved, but the Helix moorings and other things, they them onto the boat from, from the, from the town dock with the, with the hoist. The Cabanel Marine uses it. There's a variety of users that.
Non-routine or non.
Yes.
Episodic or whatever you want to call it.
The lot is also, you know, in the code nine, four, three, it also says that, you know, there's no parking in there after eleven. We don't enforce that now either, but so there are already constraints on parking in that lot. We just, it's, it's not enforceable or enforced right now. Yeah.
Motion.
I, I believe that we need to amend the town code to happen.
Yes.
That language will be developed and then brought back to the council for you to then say, yes, it's ready for an advertisement. So there's another layer of being able to talk about it.
Advertisement of the.
Of a public hearing.
Yeah, of a public hearing to look, to consider the ordinance.
Right, right.
So let me amend my motion to allow Carol Wardell, the same people to confer with the police chief and get a clean copy of what needs to be advertised and bring it back to the council. Or approval.
I'll amend my second.
So the motion is made and seconded that that team of people develop and bring to the council a proposed ordinance change along with any other.
Policy change.
Incendiary policy changes. Any further?
Yeah, just so everybody's clear, most of these recommendations, I went to the chief about people parking everywhere down there. Some of the fishermen called me up and they told me they don't have any place to park. So I said, well, lift the rope up and pop over my lot for now. And that's when I got involved and and some other people complained to the chief. And then Ben, we brought it up at the Harbor Commission meeting and most of these recommendations are from the chief of police. So.
You expect then that he's.
Yeah.
And, and.
Right. And he, and I asked him, can I say that you're on board with all these recommendations? He said, yes, because he couldn't be here tonight.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item of business is a letter from Fire Chief Petron recommending probationary firefighter Tyler Lopes be removed from probationary status effective August eighteenth.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to so act. Any discussion on that? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. The next item is a request from the administrator for the town to hire William Moore as interim DPW Director of Public Works until such time as the vacancy can be filled.
I'll make that motion.
Well, I thought we were going to have, oh, okay.
I'll second it.
The motion is made and seconded to hire William Moore as interim DPW director. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Those opposed signify by saying nay.
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 Now, can I make another motion?
Yes.
You can.
So I'm going to make a motion that we hire Ted Boddington as interim DPW Director until such time as the vacancy can be filled.
I'll second that motion. Is there further discussion?
Just a
You want a clarification?
Motion include, I just suggest that the language should be that the appointment and also further develop and advertise an RFP for the DPW director position.
That's my motion.
Just to point out order with the solicitor, since it's not on the agenda, can we still vote on it?
You can, because you have a the appointment as an interim DPW Director. It's for someone else. But that doesn't preclude the council from voting someone else as interim DPW Director. That's the main motion. It's not for the person, it's for the position.
I made the motion.
Motion then is to hire Ted Boddington as interim DPW Director until such time as the vacancy can be filled and to, I'm sorry if I could Solicitor?
A motion to appoint Mr. Boddington as interim DPW Director and further to develop and advertise an RFP for the DPW director position.
And to develop and advertise an RFP for the position.
Further discussion.
Discussion. Go ahead.
Yeah, I I still just have concerns about the 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 ethics opinion that Ted still needs, which is holding me back. I just want to make that clear.
So I'll amend that motion again with the language you used with stipulations to allow the town administrator to continue to control workings of the transfer station.
The motion then has been amended to appoint Ted Boddington as interim Director of Public Works to pursue advertising that position and to place the transfer station operation under the purview of the town administrator. Is that accurate?
That's what I said.
Got a question in the audience.
I will second that motion. Yes.
I'm just confused. I knew. So why are we swapping Ted Boddington for William Moore? What's the difference? Why should I care?
Because Ted, go ahead, you explain.
The motion to appoint Bill Moore did not pass.
We have a vacancy in the DPW Director.
A vacancy.
Okay.
But why is Ted better than Bill? I again, I knew I missed some of the politics, but why is Ted better than Bill?
Because Bill has a full time job in Newport, and we need somebody going to be here during the day.
Thank you.
Are you ready to vote? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion does not carry. Neither appointment was successful.
Just for the record, I think we're putting the cart before the horse with the ethics ruling, and I politely disagree with the solicitor of taking the vote on Bill Moore.
I can make another motion, right?
Yes.
I will make a motion to appoint Bill Moore as the interim DPW Director.
That's the same motion.
I can't make the same one?
It already failed.
Okay.
It already failed, yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion to advertise for a DPW Director again.
A widespread, a widespread one.
That was Ted. Can I second it? Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Motion is made and seconded to advertise again for a Director of Public Works. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is communications as copies of a public notice received from Coastal Resources Management Council in which the public comment period ends the middle of next month. Two things, administrative penalty matrix guidance related in both the red book and in the amendment. Is there a motion to place this matter on file as I see no no impact on our situation?
Is this I'll second it.
It's seconded.
Second it.
Maybe seconded to place
Any thoughts on this from you?
They had some young whippersnapper of a lawyer come up with this matrix. And basically what it does is increase increases the fines and penalties. In order to get that fine schedule enacted, any state agency has to go through this process, the public comment portion of it. That's basically what it is.
Well, that young whippersnapper should go back to wherever it came from. But I think we got enough fines and penalties in State Rhode Island already.
Motion made and seconded, sir.
Yes. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
It doesn't
Thank you. The next the tax assessor to abate two accounts.
So I did speak with the tax assessor on this. Let me explain to you. The first one's pretty self explanatory where he removed his garage, which was the abated value was $91.44. On the second one was tangible properties, which the original value was $225,000. The new assessed value is $175,000. So when I spoke to her, so I she has $175,000 there. And I said, well, shouldn't that be the bait of value was $50,000? And she said, yes, that was an error. But the exempt the exemption has been rebuilt correctly at $1,736. So so with those explanations, I'd make a recommendation to approve the abatement list.
The motion is made and seconded to approve the abatement proposed by the assessor. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is an email from Travis Snow, who remains in the audience, expressing concerns regarding the debris washing ashore from the wind turbines. Received direction from the solicitor on who this can be referred to as it is now under federal jurisdiction. And I believe you have a comment in that ring.
I do, yes. And I'm going to make a suggestion to the
Mr. Snow is is there as well.
Yeah, I'd make a suggestion here. The council should refer the communication from Mr. Snow to your legislative, federal legislative delegation, Congressman AMO, Senators Reed and White House. There are two federal agencies which have supervision over this particular instance. The first one is the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, and the second one is the Bureau of Safety and Environmental Enforcement. And it seems to me that this is something that the federal delegation should be involved with because of the impact on the coastal resources of the State Rhode Island.
But I think it's Mr. Snow's question is what to do with the stuff that we've already collected. I mean, I collected some. And I haven't taken it to transfer station. I mean, should it be put in barrels? Should it be put?
That's evidence.
Yeah.
It should be retained and collected, and your federal delegation should know that you're you're holding evidence and you'd like to turn it over to the
Okay.
Relevant federal authorities.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
That answers my question.
That's evidence.
Okay.
That's why I retained it.
Yes. In fact, this Bureau of Safety and Environmental Enforcement Agency has already been collecting some of it. So it's important that it it gets to Rhode Island.
That's the responsible party. So that's the reason that I'm holding this. I'm not just going to bring it to their doorstep. I'd rather have them come and get it from me or Bessie or Bone or, you know, whoever the whoever the acronym is that's dealing with it now.
Yeah, that's
I said it to all of you guys. I talked to Gabe and and Sean McGraw and everybody that I can talk to about it. Not just you guys. I was kind of just like a copy so that everybody knows that I would kind of climb on the ladder on it. I wasn't looking for any actions you see from you guys, but I do appreciate it.
The more voices, the better.
So should we be giving this back to Vineyard Wind or we should be giving it to the federal government as something that, well, obviously, the federal government's in favor of winds, so I don't know.
Yeah, I'm a I'm a chain of custody guy.
I'm just I'm just trying to do what can be done with it, because, like I say, I have some too, and I'm holding on to it. So when you get a hold of somebody in the federal level, just tell them there's other people that have collected some of this debris, and we'd like to give it to them whoever we have to give it to, because originally, they said you couldn't take it to a transfer station. Now I think they're saying you can, so.
Originally, they said you got to call this 800 number.
Right.
And that 800 number led to, you know, armed out robot transcription where, you know, you have to wait and you have to use your pad. I went online and decided to go around the robot and just execute the task on my head. And so I notified them. They know I have a pile of this stuff. It was all over the news. It's if they weren't really looking to clean up that themselves, they'd have showed up. I screamed loud and proud.
Yeah, my concern on this stuff is it does have some kind of adhesive strips on it. And I think people down in South Shore are doing a good job cleaning it up, because my concern was if you get some little kid picks one of those up and starts munching on it, what's going to happen to them? You know, it's it's not out of the realm possibility. So, okay.
The opportunity to speak with Congressman's office in the near future.
We will make that Morning will be here Monday. Okay. It's going to be here at three to four o'clock, and it will be at the public safety.
The public safety.
I will be sending that out. We come from that today.
Yeah. So you can go face to face if you wish.
Bring some of the chunks.
The chunks are there. Yeah, we have chunks, I think.
I I would.
You can go get it.
Any further discussion on that? Great.
I think further you should notify Coast Guard. Yeah.
Is it is it in the water?
It's in the jurisdiction that may be notified.
Yeah.
Any kind of green debris, anything like that, that's in the water, right? For me, it's in the jurisdiction.
Correct.
Only only in is Tommy Corbin feeling. All is Coast Guard.
Could be facing EPA too.
Yeah, and then there's a plethora of response or notification. And the big issue that I'm sure most of us are concerned about it happened. I was on the phone, community, and it's off the top of my head. Because it didn't come from us, and and it's a town beach. The reason that I sent the email to use the word is I'm just concerned about like picking up another state's externalities. And they're dealing with a multinational corporation, and it's setting a precedent that we're willing to just kind of do that. I'm not. Message that I'm putting on the ladder and I appreciate you guys. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Travis.
The next item of business is the consent calendar.
Motion to place the consent calendar on file.
So this, I'd like to pull
You second it?
Second, but I'd like to pull consent to just to ask the solicitor a question, not to discuss.
Then there's a motion to place item one on the consent calendar on file. That motion's been seconded. Is there further discussion? All in favor? And there's a motion then to discuss item two, and that's been seconded. Is there is there any discussion?
I think if you pull it, you can discuss it.
All in
Well, I mean, I it's it's is this under litigation? This consent.
I think the correct word is anticipated litigation. We received, as you know.
Is there? There is a motion to discuss item two. Are you are you ready to vote?
Is it to pull it out, to pull number two out of consent? That's the vote, right?
Yes. All in favor? Aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you. Now proceed, please.
It's anticipated litigation. I've spoken with an attorney, Keith Kyle, who sent the letter, which we discussed in executive sessions. And there is a statement that a lawsuit could and probably will be filed. But there is always the question of whether or not this matter can be resolved short of litigation. Mr. Steckel's letter is a request to DEM for a meeting on this with Mr. Kyle, his client, a DEM and town representatives. That's the purpose of the letter. If DEM is willing to do it, I don't mind participating either.
Okay. That's all. I just wanted some clarification from it to see how it was going to go. What what basis we were and acknowledged that we did get this letter. So I'm I'm
Is there a motion to place this?
I don't know. Second.
Discussion on that. All in favor? Aye. Are there any opposed? Last is the payment of bills. And made and seconded to pay bills. All in favor of the motion signify by saying
Aye.
Thank you. There being no further business before the council will declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your attention and your